To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling. Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
And trustee Marisak.
Here.
And we have a quorum this evening. Moving on, public participation. We have the public comment period. This is the two-minute opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. Is there anyone so interested this evening? All right, hearing none, move on. We have item B is a CMAP presentation. And with that, invite CMAP up. I don't know if staff has any intro. Or go ahead. You can do, you can give your own intro.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jake Seid. I'm a senior planner at CMAP. We're delighted to be working with the Village of Montgomery on the Unified Development Ordinance project that kicked off late last year. We're using this opportunity just to, just provide an introduction to where we are in the process, give an overall introduction to what the project's going to be like and what we plan on doing over the next several months. This is going to be just a brief presentation, probably about 10 minutes or so, but I just wanted to provide you with our brief agenda. We're going to do an overview of who CMAP is, excuse me, who CMAP is, review our timeline, talk about some of the key ordinance issues that we're going to be going over, and then wrap up with the next steps in the project. Okay, so who is CMAP? For those of you who do not know, we are the Regional Planning Agency for the Greater Chicago Region. We were created in 2005 and serve the seven county region around Chicago. This region includes 284 municipalities, and we created the ON2 2050 Plan late last year in October, which is, you know, kind of the reason that we're working on this project. Initially, the application came through during our earlier regional comprehensive plan, ON2 2040, or GO2 2040, excuse me. And why is CMAP funding this work? Well, CMAP receives our funding through a number of federal agencies. The two big ones are the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the U.S. Department of Transportation. We created the LTA program about 10 years ago to implement our regional plan. And so we do a number of planning projects throughout the region, comprehensive plans, corridor plans, bike and pedestrian plans, that implement the goals of our overall overarching plan. Village staff applied to CMAP for this, this specific work on the ordinance, and the project was selected from approximately 80 applicants. So this is a very competitive process. And our goal here is just to help communities to prosper, ensuring a prosperous region for all. Now, why would the village partner with CMAP? Well, there's a number of good reasons. The assistance that we provide is at very low cost to the village, and CMAP is committed to implementation. We don't just write plans that sit on the shelf and collect dust. And because of the size and scope of our agency, we have a significant depth of resources and technical expertise that we can bring to all the projects that we work on. Okay, so the first question that you might have is, what is a Unified Development Ordinance? This is probably not a term that you hear every day. Well, Unified Development Ordinance, we also call it a UDO, regulates land development and redevelopment. This includes your zoning regulations, your subdivision regulations, and your sign standards. It fully integrates all these regulations into one place so that it's easier to use and streamlined. The big thing that we're trying to do is to help implement the comprehensive plan that was written a few years ago, the 2035 Comp Plan. And it also provides us with opportunities for further community engagement for folks who are interested in these kinds of topics. We want to take this opportunity to kind of show you what the UDO might look like as we're working on it in the coming months. UDO is separated into several major sections. The first section is the administrative section of the code, and that refers to the administrative bodies, entities like the village board, the Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning officer, who make sure that applications go from one step to the other. This handles all the procedures and applications for things like special-use permits, variations, text amendments, and also subdivision regulations, subdivision annexation approvals, that sort of thing. We've got a picture here of what our subdivision standards might look like in the future. You know, when people think about subdivisions, it's the dividing of land, but it's also, you know, what your public realm looks like. So how wide streets are, how many parking lanes there are, how many travel lanes, the location of bike infrastructure and sidewalks, all those kinds of things that make our neighborhoods look like, like what they do. The next major section of the code is the zoning district standards. The zoning district standards, we're thinking about things like setbacks and yards, front yards, rear yards, building height, lot coverage, you know, really the nuts and bolts of the ordinance. In the new code, we're going to be recommending design standards for each of the major use categories in the code. So separate design standards for residential uses, commercial uses, and industrial uses. The next major part of the code is the uses section. So we have principal uses and accessory uses. Principal uses is, for example, a single-family home in a single-family zoning district. We've got the, the business district, like in the mill district here, or the, the larger commercial districts out on the, on the corridors. And it also applies to the manufacturing industrial districts out on Alcott Road and the other parts of town. The uses section also refers to accessory uses in structures, things like fences, solar panels, sheds, garages, all those sorts of things. So we want to make sure that we include those sustainable structures that are really taking place now in new developments. The final section of the code talks about the other onsite development, other onsite development, things like off-street parking, loading, landscaping, and signs. Now, we've got a really good foundation on some of these because village staff has spent a lot of time reworking these over the years. So we're just trying to organize and streamline these so that they work better for the village going forward. So we've talked about what a UDO is. We also want to talk about what it's not. A UDO is not a planning document. It's, it's an ordinance. So it provides, refines existing planning goals, but it does not create new ones, right? This is not a new plan that we're creating right now. The ordinance is also not frozen in time. It must be monitored and updated over the course of years so it doesn't, you know, collect dust and, and not make sense anymore for the future. UDO cannot require a business to open or close, whether it's a desirable business that the village would really want to have in town, or possibly a nuisance that the village would, would like to get rid of. That's not the place for the ordinance. The ordinance also cannot require good architecture and design. We can kind of provide an overall box of what development should look like, but not the specifics of, of architectural details. That's not our job. So why does the village need a UDO? Well, some of the existing ordinances are rather outdated. They haven't been looked at and revised in a number of years. So we want to make sure that these regulations are user-friendly for residents, staff, and developers. Really, we want anyone to be able to pick it up and understand it at first glance. We want to respond to the changes in the community over the years and address some of the sustainability goals that I mentioned earlier. In terms of the scope and timeline for the project, we're looking at approximately 24 months from start to finish. We started this project in September of last year. It's a four-phase project. The first phase we handled in the fall and winter of last year, which was reviewing the existing conditions in town. We're currently finishing up phase two, which is assessing the regulations. The first major deliverable for this project is going to be what we call a recommendations memo. It's about a 40-page document that describes the major issues with the existing ordinances and the recommendations that we have to improve it in the future. In the next phase, phase three, we're going to actually be drafting the standards of the ordinance. That's going to take course over the several months, working with village staff and also with our steering committee to ensure that the document is reflecting what we want it to do in the future. The final phase of this project is going to be the public review and adoption. So we want to make sure that the public is involved in this process and that they understand what's being done with, with the various parts of the code. So once we've got a complete ordinance, we're going to be hosting a number of workshops so that folks can learn more about what's in there and how this might affect their investments. Like I mentioned, we have a steering committee for this project that's made up of a number of folks. We've got village trustees, plant commissioners, a number of residents and local business owners. So hopefully their varied perspectives will provide additional insight into this project going forward. We wanted to just mention what we've heard so far as we have been working on this from our various meetings with stakeholders and the steering committee. Overall, we've heard that we need greater clarity in, in the ordinance, less duplication, less need for interpretation of the code. You know, when you think about what's in it for me, folks don't want to have to hire a lawyer just to understand what's in the code. No offense, Laura. Focus on the, on the mill district. Everybody we talked to is very interested in seeing new development down here. So making sure that we're talking about what types of uses are in there, the height of buildings, the design standards for the buildings. And then fences. I think in the, in the same breath that people mentioned the mill district, they would also mention fence issues in town. Figuring out what heights for fences would make sense, what types of materials, and this looming situation with annexation agreements that are coming up in the next five to 10 years in various developments around town. The last two I wanted to highlight, just helping adjust to the new normal, the desire for smaller homes and more compact development, the number of residential zoning districts that the village has now, and whether there's utility in having so many districts. Also addressing some of the problematic uses in town, things like outdoor storage, tire recyclers, and some indoor sports facilities that have, have come up with some development regulations over, over the last few months. Just wanted to take a look at the next steps here. So like I said, we're completing a recommendations memo that's currently being reviewed by our steering committee. We hope to have that revised and out to the public within, within the month at some point, hopefully by the end of July. We're going to be back in town for Montgomery Fest in August, just to kind of provide a education to folks on what a unified development ordinance is, what CMAP's role in it is, and how we can, you know, tell people what's going on going forward as, as the next stages of the process go along. In the summer and fall, we're going to be drafting the actual regulations that are in the ordinance and hope to be sending those to staff as they're completed. Wanted to highlight, we have a project website for this. It's being hosted by, on CMAP's website. It's cmapp.is/Montgomery with a capital M, and that is case sensitive. I think that's all we had for you. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point.
Awesome. Thanks, Jake. Any questions for Jake or staff? It's always good to see CMAP here. You're welcome anytime. You can start off every meeting with a presentation, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation where the Village of Montgomery finds such action is probable or imminent, and we'll be back afterwards.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yeah.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Marisak.
Yes.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order, and we'll move on with the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of June 24th, the building report of June 2019, the water usage report, June 2019, accounts payable through July 3rd of 2019, cancellation of the July 16th committee of the whole, and request from the Rotary Club to do street painting.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Matt Carriese 5-0, thank you. Under items for separate action tonight, we have item A, approval to call a Montgomery Development Fund loan, and I'll ask our attorney for the motion.
Okay, yes, thank you. On this item, we're looking for a motion to declare default on Line-X's low-interest loan and to take any actions necessary to collect thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Go ahead.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee, um, Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yes.
Matt Carriese 5-0, thank you. Item B is a waiver of competitive bid and recommendation towards street striping to Preform Traffic Control Systems Limited of Elk Grove Village. For the first time, our new director of public works, Mark Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you tonight is a request for waiver of bid and award of contract to Preform Traffic Control Systems. Preform is a reputable contractor that is very familiar with the Village of Montgomery and has been providing quality work for the village for many years. Street striping is an annual project that the village contracts each year to ensure that striping, ensure that the striping of our roadways is in compliance with the guidelines of the MUTCD. This work includes all pavement markings on village-owned roadways. The contract is for an amount of not to exceed $27,000, which is within the budgeted amount. However, staff is estimating that the total amount should be less than this, given the amount of roadways that we've resurfaced due to the village's infrastructure resurfacing plan. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those at those, at this time.
What's the schedule?
Typically, I haven't made contact with them as of recently. Once we move forward with the approval, they typically try to come in before Montgomery Fest is our ultimate goal. We coordinate work that they typically do with the county as well, so they tend to wait for us to get our stuff approved, and they kind of piggyback on and do Montgomery Road at the same time, which is the county's responsibility. So they do that at the same time as doing some of our, our work, obviously. So they're usually pretty prompt on getting in here.
And those are the folks that are out on Orchard Road right now, I think?
I believe so.
Awesome. All right, any questions? There a motion?
So moved. Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Matt Carriese 5-0, thank you. Before I move on, I should, I loosely mentioned, but for the press, there should be a press release coming out in the next day or so announcing Mark Worth, Mark Wolf as our new Public Works Director. So if you want to chat with him after the meeting, go ahead and do that. Kind of glossed right over that. All right, moving on to item C, we have ordinance 1863, declaring surplus property. This is waiver of first passage on the second reading. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before the board is the ordinance 1863, declaring properties of the village for surplus. The items for surplus are a 2006 Ford Explorer and a Kohler natural gas-powered generator. The Ford Taurus is scheduled to be replaced as part of the vehicle, the village's vehicle replacement program. This vehicle will be sold on an auction site after the new vehicle has been purchased and received. The Kohler generator was located at the Jefferson Street lift station and was replaced as part of the updates to that facility. The generator has already been replaced and is now located at the Public Works facility and is ready to be marketed and sold on the auction site as well. The generator was in running condition when it was removed. Therefore, staff looked at the possibility of moving that generator to some other village-owned facilities. However, it was determined that the sizing wasn't quite appropriate with most of the facilities. So we didn't feel as though it was cost prohibitive to do that, also weighing the fact of the age of the generator, not sure of the longevity that it would last. So therefore, we are asking for approval of ordinance 1863 to declare these items surplus. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions?
No. So moved.
Second.
All right.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Yes. Perfect. Because somewhere, somebody's going to be reviewing the minutes and going, how come there's only four votes on that one? So thank you. All right. And that carries 5-0, thank you. I should also mention, I'm really doing personnel updates in the middle of this, but in the audience tonight, we have our new community relations manager for the press. If you haven't met, Corinne Vargas. You'll be working with her hopefully over the next several years. We're very excited. It's a brand-new position, but it would be remiss if I didn't mention that you're here tonight. So welcome. With, and three or four people clap for that. Thank you. All right.
The important ones clapped. Did you notice who it was? You need a pen, I'll let you have it.
Matt made us.
All right, we'll move on to item D, which is the pavement management study report update 2019. Engineer Wallers?
Can you switch over?
Is this concerning PCI?
We're not going to get into PCI.
Okay, just, I pay attention to what you say.
Drill into it if you want. So this is the fifth year of our pavement management program that we started in 2015. I just wanted to go through it quickly and then kind of outline briefly the memo that we submitted and then asked for board approval of the 2020 program. So we have a summary of the paving history. What I found interesting in reviewing it from year 2016 to 2020, which will be our five-year plan, we will be paving about 35 miles of streets. The five previous years, we did about five miles. So I think it's pretty clear that we can see the impact of the non-home rule sales tax. It's really significant. The original pavement management study in 2015 contemplated about 20 miles of roadway. We've been able to do substantially more, about 15 more miles as, during the course of the program, and that's a result of additional funding that was made available through the program, federal grants, and other cost savings that we were able to, to generate through the project. So it's been successful, I think, on any measure. So this year, annually, we come back to get approval, and what we're going to be doing next year is area of subdivision that you see on this map, and those are, again, what was proposed in the 2015 plan. There's a more detailed list that I'll get to in a minute. And then additional to those roadways, we'll be doing pavement preventive maintenance on the roads we finished last year. So we go back and we seal those roads with a rejuvenator. So that would be the Kennedy, or the Cambridge and Fairfield area, and then portion of Lakewood. And then if we get to the area by Parkview, we'll do that. That's being delayed because of the lead service line replacement program. So we're not sure if we're going to get that paving done this year or next year, but as, what we generally do is anything we pave, then the following year, we'll put the sealer on it. So that's part of the, the plan as well. We'll be spending about $2.8 million this year is our plan. We'll do all the streets that were proposed in the 2015 plan. However, we are going to add a few streets. And then we also are going to substitute Dixon Road for Concord. Concord, we had made application for federal funding for that road. It's an FAU route, and that's going to be delayed probably until 2023. So that freed up some funding. So we thought Dixon would be a good substitute for that money. So that's the major change. Then we've added a few other, or two other minor streets as well. And then that'll, that'll conclude the, the five-year plan that we had started in 2015. And then, as you know, we've already started on rerating the streets this year, and then we'll be back to the board later in the fall and winter with the proposed, the next proposed five-year plan. So what I'm asking for this evening would be your concurrence on the proposed 2020 plan, and I'm obviously happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Pete. Any questions?
I'd just like to point out and thank staff for all of the work, and I think part of our ability to do more with less is that we're bidding earlier, getting in earlier, and the fact that we're ganging streets and doing it. I, I'm not sure if they paved mine today. They grounded it over to, before the holiday. So, and the neighborhood is much appreciated because they've had a lot of potholes. Mark had to come out and fill the potholes about a week before they grounded it because they were so bad. So again, the community really does appreciate all of the hard work and effort that you guys put into doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree. I think the change in getting our bids out in February has been essential to our success, so we want to continue that, obviously. So we'll be coming back with a PSA for the design engineering for 2020, and then we will be trying to move that program forward so we can do the fieldwork in the summer and fall and get that on the street in early in January.
I'd like to see staff, if possible, maybe put something together and promote the success of this program. I think that's a win for the village and the staff. I think it's something that would be wonderful to get out, maybe onto the Facebook, into, into the staff, or the village community update, just the difference that, that program has made the last few years and, and the ability with that, that change in the funding a few years back, what that can do for us and has done for us. I think we got to highlight that win. But I'd like, I think that's important to let people know.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? Doug, I know you missed it. They're going to pave the road in front of your house, but they're gapping it right in front of your house. So the rest, you missed that meeting, but we all approve that.
That's what I told the neighbor that wanted a new Parkway tree. They'll, they'll put the tree in, but I'm sorry, they're not going to pave in front of your house.
All right, with that, that's item D. We need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you all. Thanks, Pete. Item E this evening is a waiver of bid to purchase two, I'm sorry, new Public Works vehicle and Village Hall vehicle, so two vehicles from Kaufman's, and I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you, as you said, is a request to waiver a bid and purchase two vehicles from Kaufman Truck Sales in Montgomery. The first vehicle would be a 2020 GMC Terrain. This would be an SUV vehicle that is replacing the 2006 Ford Taurus that is primarily used by Village Hall staff for transportation. The cost of this vehicle is $23,991 and is $2,539 under the budgeted amount for that vehicle in the current fiscal year. The next vehicle would be a 2019 GMC Sierra. This vehicle was budgeted as a new vehicle for the Public Works Department. The cost of this vehicle is $32,631 and is $1,413 over the budgeted amount. With the two vehicles combined, there is a $1,126, $1,126 under the total budgeted amount. The Village of Montgomery has purchased vehicles from Kaufman Truck Sales in the past and has a great standing relationship with Kaufman's for not only vehicle purchases, but also service work. Kaufman Truck Sales provides the village with reduced pricing, similar to the state bid pricing. This allows the village to purchase vehicles from a local dealership at a competitive price. So with that, asking for approval, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Thanks. Questions?
Does the budgeted amount include logoing, wrapping, any additional outfitting of those vehicles?
There is additional funding in there, yes. So the emergency lighting for, for instance, the Public Works vehicle is included in the vehicle reserve.
Okay.
So yes, that would come out of that same line.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All right. Call the roll.
Trustee Lee. Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Sure.
And trustee Guyer.
Yes. You're not mayor.
We don't have any items for discussion. Anything near unfinished from anyone?
I got something.
Go ahead.
I've got a comment and a question. The comment is, is I'm really impressed with Alcott Road, how well it came out, the seams, the transitions. It's just a beautiful road. And talking to Mark, he said they used a different kind of mix on that road. But my question is, is the storm and the poles coming down on that road, was there any damage as a result of that, and do we have to repair that?
So that's a great question. I was out on Friday afternoon, ComEd finished the replacement of the nine poles that fell during the storm on Tuesday night. I was out Friday afternoon about 3:30 is when we opened up the road, so previous to opening the road, myself and some other members of the Public Works staff, we walked the good stretch of roadway where those poles fell, taking a good look at the pavement. And we didn't find any, any damage really at all to the, to the pavement. So, which was a huge relief, sigh of relief as we, yes, we just finished that project. So we were pretty happy with that.
Thank you.
I've got a couple commenting on trustee Guyer's comments. Thank you to ComEd for getting the power turned on. There were about 13, maybe 1,600 homes in the village on Tuesday that were without power. That's the longest I've ever been without power in Montgomery. I think it was five or five and a half hours. So thank you to ComEd there. And as long as we're talking about ComEd, I'm, I'm going to ask engineer Wallers, where are we with the ComEd easement thing to get the path through? Any, any update? Any, any update?
Yes, we've received comments from one of the groups. I believe there's nine that we generally submit to, and then we've, and the last time we did this, we got comments from four. So practically, we really need comments from three more groups before we'll be able to move forward.
Another year?
I would anticipate that we would be, our goal would be to bid this early next year so that we get an early start on construction, so we're hoping to wrap it up this fall, winter, and then be prepared to bid it for the early construction next year.
Okay. Thank you. Second item, there are some holes, or there's some concrete that has, apparently because of the heat, on Orchard Road, as you're headed south in the right lane, and it looks like the concrete's been removed. It's about an inch and a half, maybe two inches deep. Do you know when Kendall County, or, excuse me, King County is going to be able to get that repaired?
I'm not aware of that, so now that I am, I'll definitely call the appropriate people at KDOT, and we'll see if we can...
It's in the right lane, I want to say just south of Orchard Road Animal Hospital.
Okay.
I don't even own a Jeep, and I hardly felt it.
Must've been in the Prius.
All right, anything else? Danny?
Your question was, were there any problems on the Fourth of July? No, matter of fact, very little, a lot less than last year.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay, with that, future meetings, our next village board meeting is Monday, July 22nd, 7:00 PM in this room. We just canceled the committee of the whole. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.